Structural financial deficit in the city and also in the school department. A budget commission was established to ensure fiscal stability and to oversee the financial operations of the city of Windsocket. In September of 2014, I had the pleasure to meet Mr. Perrier. And Mr. Perrier was appointed to the position of Finance Director and Administration in the Windsocket Education Department. During that time, the city of Windsocket was still under the control of the Budget Commission, and the school's fiscal status was still tenuous at best. The school district was in desperate need of a finance director who could provide both fiscal expertise as well as leadership in an effort to navigate the district through those harrowing times. At the time, I was the interim superintendent. I had the pleasure of hiring and working with Mr. Perrier. Instantly, it was apparent to others and to me that Mr. Perrier possessed the vision, knowledge, interpersonal skills, and leadership to guide the school department back from the fiscal rank. I'd like to say that it is, has been, and will continue to be a genuine honor to work and collaborate with Mr. Perrier on a daily basis. His dedication and commitment to our school department and community are both commendable and are second to none. So I want to congratulate Brad as the 2020 Riaspo Business Manager of the Year in Rhode Island. Congratulations, Brad.
Bravo. Great job.
Bravo, bravo. Well deserved.
And secondly, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to speak briefly about winter sports. So the winter sports in Rhode Island began on January 4th, specifically here in Windsocket. The boys' and girls' indoor track team, the boys' and girls' varsity and junior varsity basketball teams, as well as the freshman boys' basketball teams, started their tryouts. And the season is scheduled to begin at some point after January 19th. So it's great to have our kids back on the court. And I look forward to when the season does start. Obviously, the protocols, the COVID protocols will be in place. And, you know, things are going to look very different from what they've looked in the past. I know that the Interscholastic League is still coordinating, you know, whether or not spectators will be allowed. If spectators are allowed, how many will be allowed? It's, I think, partly going to be based on the venues that each of the schools have. But that's an exciting, you know, at least some sense of normalcy that we'll be returning to the state and specifically to the Windsocket Education Department. Our middle school sports are slated to begin on January 20th, with the tryouts beginning on the 20th, from 20th to the 22nd. Those winter sports from the middle school will be boys' and girls' basketball. So again, you know, we're excited to begin our winter sports season here in Windsocket. And, you know, I wish all of our student athletes and coaches all of the best, you know, health and safety comes first. But we're really excited, looking forward to having our student athletes and our coaches back on their respective courts and fields. So with that, Mr. Chairman, those are my recognitions and announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Does any school committee member want to address the recognitions and announcements? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, recognitions and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I'll make a motion to approve the December 16, 2020, open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Costa. Anyone have any additions, corrections, deletions from the minutes? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Second by Vice Chair Burke. I'd like to take out the purchases out of the consent agenda for discussion only. And I'd like to ask Mr. Perrier to talk about the ESER costs that we have listed. I know we discussed these at the Finance Committee meeting today, but I think it would be good for the committee, the total committee, and the folks present at the meeting that hear about this. I'll turn it over to you. Mr. Perrier.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. What you have in front of you is a group of purchases. We've listed them all as ESER grant purchases. That's through the money that we received through CARES Act. And probably about four months ago, that money was released. We put together a plan to spend that money. And the way that the money was released, it followed the same guidelines as some of our federal grants, that we had to share a portion of that with the private schools in the city of Windsocket. So we reached out to those private schools. We did consultations with them, and they all wanted to participate in the program. So we based the amount of money we got for our ESER grant based on the enrollment across the district, not just for us, but for the enrollments in the private schools. And that was how it was determined that the $3.3 million we received in ESER funding, about $350,000 of that, that was going to be going to the private schools to do as they see fit for their ESER programming. So we went through the process. We submitted the grant. The grant's approved by RIDE. And now we are just executing that portion of the grant right now, either by reimbursing the schools that made the purchases already, or by buying things directly for them.
So we've got about $374,000 that are sitting there. And again, we have not made any payments to the private schools until we get money to disperse to them.
Absolutely correct. Yes, sir.
So because they were federal, a portion of these funds...
Because, yes, because it followed, yeah, it followed the distribution guidelines we have for some other federal grants. I don't know if that was foreseen by the Department of Education or not, but in the end, we needed to share that money with the private schools.
Thank you. Does any other school committee member have any items they'd like to discuss in the consent agenda? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, Dr. McGee, we'll go into your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I'm going to start my report with the personnel items. So to update the committee, we have a total of 10 full-time employees that were hired over the past couple of weeks. They range from a school nurse teacher to a primary self-contained teacher to two I-explore teachers at our middle schools. We have also one, we have two custodial positions. We have one secretary, I'm sorry, four custodial positions and two secretary positions. We also, in addition to those 10 full-time employees, we have six personnel in the district who are, who will be receiving stipends for positions varying from coaches to onsite field supervisors for our athletic teams and an alternative communication district evaluator. So 10 total full-time employees and six stipend physicians over the past two weeks. Secondly, I'm going to talk about our return to school this week from our pause, which started prior to the Thanksgiving break. On Monday, January 11th, our pre-K kindergarten and self-contained students in grades K through 12 returned, full-time in person. On Tuesday, the 12th, students in grades 1 through 8 and our Career Center students returned in a hybrid model. On January 26th, it is our plan for our ninth graders at Windsocket High School to return in the same hybrid model that we're utilizing in grades 1 through 8 and at the Career Center. And then on February 2nd, it's our intent to bring back students in grades 10 through 12 in a hybrid model. I want to also make note that we're doing our very best to accommodate wishes of parents. One of the things that we've found in returning after our pause is that there are some families that are requesting that their students move from the hybrid model to the fully virtual model. And then there are some that are wishing for their students to go from the fully virtual to the hybrid model. And we're doing our very best, as I said, to accommodate each. To date, we've had approximately 65 requests to go virtual, and we've had approximately 23 requests. And that sort of is changing on a day-to-day basis. We've had 23 requests to go in-person. What we look to, what we look at in terms of criteria when we try to make these accommodations is if there's room in those classrooms, because if, to make you aware that we do have a class limit, even though we have students that are virtual, that are working with teachers virtually, so we can't exceed the contractual class limit for those. And we also want to make sure with, when we have families who elect to go from virtual to in-person hybrid, that we don't exceed the number of students being approximately 15. We try to stay as close to that number of 15 as we can for the, you know, the health and the safety of everyone. So there are families that are on the waiting list. However, you know, again, we're doing our very best. You know, I want to commend Dr. Holt and Mrs. DiRiso and Mrs. Morell and Ms. Agia for really, you know, looking at, taking those requests that are coming through the principals and doing their very best to try to, you know, find a classroom for those students whose families wish to change their mode of instruction. I'm going to talk a little bit about testing. There, I've spoken about this in the past, and as I've said before, there were four pilot districts over the last couple of months that piloted the asymptomatic testing for staff and students. And when those four districts piloted the asymptomatic testing, there was heavy support from the Department of Health and from RIDE in that they provided volunteers who would, you know, swab, you know, students and staff and would do the clerical work of inputting that information. And as we move beyond the four districts that piloted, the piloting is over, and now districts have the option of establishing testing sites, whether it be at each specific school or district-wide. And I've made this, I've made my thoughts on this public in that I don't necessarily see the need to do this right now. It only provides you with a snapshot, and it's only for folks who are students and staff who are asymptomatic. And in addition to that, the districts now are responsible for manning that process. And even beyond that, it would also take students away from their classrooms. So students that are in-person, if we did this during the school day, which is what many districts have done, and we would have to then move those kids out of their classroom for the testing. And I would prefer not to take kids out of their classrooms at this point in time, as they're only, you know, those that are in school are only in school two days a week. So I don't, you know, believe we need to take advantage of this. And as an aside, I know we have a local testing site here in Windsocket, Thundermist on Clinton Street. And, you know, anyone that wants to be tested can go through the K through 12 testing portal and can go there. I've been, personally, I've been there about four times since the spring, and, you know, fortunately tested negative each of those four times. But each time I've been there, no one's been in line. So it isn't as though, it's challenging for students or staff here in Windsocket to get tested. And when I've been there, as I said, there literally hasn't been anyone there waiting to get tested. And they are pretty fast with their turnover in terms of letting you know, you know, what you're, you know, whether you've tested negative or positive. So the next item I want to talk about are vaccinations. And as you know, there are currently four hubs across the state that are providing vaccinations for people who are a part of that first stage of vaccinations. And those, the first wave of vaccinations are going out to fire and police and, you know, healthcare workers, you know, people who work directly, you know, with the elderly in nursing homes and different settings such as those. So one of those hubs is in Smithfield. And even though it's in Smithfield, it doesn't mean that people from across the state can't go there. They're just locating them in, you know, different, strategically in different regions of the state. But I've had conversations, as have Mr. Notariani, our Chief Operating Officer. We've met with Chief Chatra, and yesterday, we went to the Smithfield site to get a sense of how it's run, how it works, you know, who they have there, you know, what the stations look like, and just overall what the process looks like. Because when we begin Phase 2 across the state, then the cities and towns are going to be responsible for coordinating the vaccinations for people in the community. I know that, so there are some things I know and there are some things I don't know. What I don't know is we don't know when Phase 2 is going to begin. You know, it could be a few weeks from now. It could be a month. It could be two months. Chief Chatra said that, you know, once they get an idea of when, they will be communicating that to us. We've already started, you know, working on the logistics with Chief Chatra so that when that phase does begin, we'll be ready here in Windsocket. We're looking at one of two possibilities of locations, one being Hamlet Middle School and the other being Windsocket High School. I think we're actually going to be going with him. Mr. Notariani and I are going to be meeting with Chief Chatra at Hamlet Middle School on Friday to sort of, you know, look at the layout and, you know, establish, you know, what it will look like when we do start the vaccination phase number two. So, and it appears as though all school personnel will be a part of the Phase 2 vaccination. So, you know, we're just, again, we're waiting to find out when that is going to begin. Hopefully, it's going to begin sooner rather than later, because, you know, the more teachers and staff and students and families that we can get vaccinated here in Windsocket, you know, the safer people will be. And hopefully, as we do that and we approach the spring and, you know, we can start to bring back, hopefully, you know, more students back into our schools. And the last thing I want to talk about briefly are the substitutes. And Dr. Holt and I received an email from the Highlander Institute today. And unfortunately, I would love to be able to say that they have some substitutes for us. They still don't. So, you know, we're still waiting, but I'm not holding my breath. They seem to have people that agree that they want to sub, and then, you know, during the process of the training that the Highlander Institute is providing, they back out or they just, you don't hear from them again. So unfortunately, we have not procured any subs from Ride or the Highlander Institute, although, you know, Ms. Dargan and the HR department are, you know, doing their very best to try to find subs. We do have subs in the district. I don't want to make it sound like we don't have any subs. We do. But again, you know, months ago, we were promised that we would be getting more substitutes, and unfortunately, up to date, we have not received any. So that's my report, Mr. Chairman. If either you or the school committee have any questions, I would love to attempt to answer them.
One comment on vaccinations. For those of us who heard and saw the Governor's press conference today, Dr. Nicole Alexander Scott said the biggest problem with vaccinations right now is they can't get enough. The supply is low, and every week, whatever supplies that we do get, they get sent out and they get administered right away. So whatever we get out, whatever we get in from Pfizer or Moderna, they are used immediately. So it's going to take a long, and I think right now, we've got 45,000 inoculations in Rhode Island. So this is going to be a very slow process, she said. So, you know, when it finally comes down to the schools, it's going to be some months, I imagine, unless all of a sudden, the federal government and the labs really speed up the number of vaccinations that they send to the different states, to all the states. Because right now, they would like to do at least double and triple the number of vaccinations that they're doing currently, but they just don't have the material to do it. So this could be a slower, slower process than what we've been hearing. So we'll have to wait and see on that. Anyone else have any comments or questions for Dr. McGee?
Actually, I was wondering, is there any, like, incentives that we're setting for substitutes to try to maybe draw them in a little bit? Or is that not something that we can do or can offer? And if we can't get substitutes, what about, like, volunteer aides or something that might be able to help out?
Yes, good question. So we are paying more. Mr. Perrier, a few moments ago, was talking about the ESER funds, and $71,000 of the ESER funds that we received are going to our substitutes to increase their pay. So it's almost doubling the amount that we normally would pay our substitutes. And that's, there's that incentive. And, you know, I know that, again, Ms. Dargan has been reaching out to, you know, colleges because, you know, we're going to have students who are going to be the early graduates, the, you know, the winter graduates. And she's been reaching out to other organizations to try to see if we can find people who are, would be interested. So she has been working hard, along with the other, the secretaries in the HR department, to try to, you know, be creative in ways to find substitutes beyond the Highlander Institute.
Dr. McGee, just to jump in on the comment that you made, the grant that we received for substitutes, it actually ran up December 31st. So as of January 1st, all the substitutes did return back to the original rate of pay.
So even though when we spoke...
We also, I think I just, sorry, I just wanted to add in, we have been cold-calling substitutes, so even though the rate of pay was brought back down to the original posted amount of $100 per day, we did inform the substitute to cold-call. Unlike normal, non-pandemic years where it's day-to-day and subject to work, we, while we're not guaranteeing work, there is available work for substitutes who want to work every single day. And so we're calling them, and that's a little bit more of an incentive. We are competing with unemployment greatly. They're getting an extra weekly, almost stipend to stay home. And so $100 per day versus, you know, making, you know, $125 or $150 a day on unemployment isn't really something that's drawing people in. We do have building subs in almost every single one of our buildings now. Those are permanent employees for the full calendar year, dedicated to working every single day, all day. And at the high school, we are still very much advocating and pulling in substitutes there. We cold-called the last three days, and about 50 subs we were able to call throughout the workday. We got four more. So it's, people, most of our substitute are retirees, students, college students, and things like that, who just are not able to actually physically work because of the pandemic.
I know there's a requirement for a certification in place. Is that a hindrance to this? Is there an emergency certification?
There's no certification. It's 60 college credits or higher, so long as they don't go consecutive in the same assignment. So in order to go consecutive as Title I district, it's 21 days before we have to notify them, rather, we have to notify parents their teacher is not highly qualified, meaning they don't have the content knowledge or the testing or the certification. Once we hit 45 days per ride, they must be certified. And even that, an emergency certification costs them $200 for a one-year cert, and there's some testing requirements and course requirements that they have to do as well. That's hard on our full-time teachers who are appointed, who get the benefits of the contracts, let alone our day-to-day subs who aren't making enough. We do play a game, especially during the pandemic, where, especially at the high school, they might rotate subjects in not the same period, so they never go consecutive. But the downside to that is, again, they're not qualified in the content area they're teaching. So there's a bit of a drawback to that, depending on the subject. You might have a history teacher who's really well-versed in history, teaching chemistry, and that's not going to do us any favors. But at this point, we're taking them. Do you like kids? Come on, boy.
Is it possible for an incentive to pay the certification cost? Is that something that's a possibility?
We had toyed with that idea. I just started. I've only been here 18 months. And we have toyed with that idea in other areas, especially in the critical shortage areas. But these are nationwide problems. Substitute shortages are nationwide. Special education is our hardest to fill. Ironically, we have two I-explore positions that we fill tonight. Those positions have been posted since March. They can have any certification area at all. It's one of those odd positions where, as long as they're certified, they can teach this class. And we still couldn't find people to kind of fight that one either.
Unfortunately, the substitute issue is not just in Windsocket. It's all over. It's in mass. It's in all, throughout Rhode Island. The school committee chairs that I've talked to at our meetings, they're at its end as well. They can't find them. And so it's a big shortage. This pandemic has really crippled the teaching pool. So we're just going to have to do the best we can. And hopefully, after the vaccines are out, hopefully this year, we should see a larger number of teachers that are willing to be back. Anyone else have comments on the superintendent's report?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Kapiskas.
With regard to the issue of vaccines, whether or not it's available, can we mandate employees receive it to return to work? I know Michelle Dargan is going, no. My kind of no answer, but I just want to know.
How is that? I don't think it's, it can be mandatory. From what the governor has said and what Dr. Scott has said, not just today, but in the past, I don't know if that's going to change, that you can mandate it. I think it's going to be a choice. Hopefully, most people will choose to get it. Otherwise, the state isn't going to move very quickly, and this virus is not going to go away. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Ms. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into the subcommittee reports. On Monday, we had a facilities subcommittee meeting. Ms. Leclerc and I attended. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Notariani to give us just a summary of what we covered at that meeting, which will be very different than what he presents in his technology and facilities update. So regarding the subcommittee, Mr. Notariani.
Thank you, Chairman. So we initially discussed our COVID-19 preparations in terms of personal protective equipment and staffing concerns with regard to our custo- of personal protective equipment and staffing concerns with regard to our custodial department and how many custodians we have in the building and whether or not we can meet the cleaning needs of the district. We then moved on to facilities projects. We got, first one was the high school boiler, in terms of an update, which we were expecting the boiler to be delivered this week. And I was informed earlier today that they arrived on site this morning. We then discussed the potential need to upgrade the boilers at the Career Tech Center, and NESA repairs to that system. We talked about plumbing updates and where we were in terms of any repairs that were needed throughout the district in terms of plumbing. And then discussed playground repairs, where we'll be starting the repairs at Paris Elementary School and then moving on to Pothier, Globe, and Vernon Heights Elementary School in terms of repairs to the playgrounds. The next topic we discussed was the five-year capital plan. As the committee may recall, we, we caused the five-year capital plan due to COVID. But Mr. Perry and I will be talking about the five-year capital plan over the next several weeks and getting that back on track for an eventual submission to the state. We talked about the Trust Safety Committee, which is a mandated committee by the Rhode Island Trust, which is our insurance company. We talked about releasing an RFP for elevator maintenance and repairs and inspections. And lastly, we talked about transportation services and where we were with Durham School Services with regard to transportation in the district of our students back and forth to school and to school events. Summarizes the, the meeting we conducted, Chairman.
Just one follow-up question, Mr. Notoriani. As far as any, any problems with our buses, say, this week, any issues with, with them, since, you know, we've been on virtual learning, distance learning for a while now, at least a few weeks, and any issues regarding to busing?
I'm happy to report, Chairman, that there have been no issues that have come to my attention as of today. It's only been three days. Well, let's hope for the best for the rest of the week.
Yes, we will. Anyone else have any comments or questions from Mr. Notoriani? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the facilities subcommittee report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc, Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, we'll go on to the Finance Committee Subcommittee Report. We had a meeting today. Ms. Leclerc and I attended. And I'll turn it over to our Director of Finance, just to cover briefly all the items that we discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Subcommittee Meeting today, the Finance Subcommittee Meeting, we met today at 3:00 PM, January 13th. There were several items on our agenda. First was an update to our CARES Act grant funding. Update of the committee as to where we stood with not only the ESER funds that we talked about in the purchases, but our supplemental impact aid, our substitute grant, our summer block grant, and a few comments on the CRP. We talked about the final state revenue amounts for fiscal year '21. As you may have known, the, the state finally passed and finalized the budget back in December. The good news is, we received the full funding that was promised to us back year. Last year, when the budget was put together, there was no reduction, even though one was anticipated by myself. So that's some good news for the school committee and for the school department. We talked about the upcoming salary adjustments that we're going to need to be making to both the teachers and the TAs, the 951 contract, due to the increase in funding that was just finalized. We were waiting to get the final numbers on that. Now we're going to be making some adjustments per the contract. And finally, we talked about our OPEB financial performance. Going forward on a quarterly basis, we'll be taking a look at our OPEB investments and then making adjustments as we see fit.
Thank you, Mr. Perrier. Anyone have any comments for our Director of Finance or for me or Mr. Leclerc? Dr. McGee, roll call. I'll make, first, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Finance Subcommittee Report. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Leclerc, Mrs. Costa, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, I'll ask Mrs. Kapiskas to give us her report on the meeting that was held recently for CILLAC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The CILLAC met on January 7th, 2021, which was last Thursday. Meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM. We reviewed old business. The parent support group meetings were suspended. Dr. McGee provided us with an update of the current plan for the reopening of schools after the holiday break, which I won't reiterate as he's gone over it this evening. Dr. Sullivan advised that the team at the high school was looking to bring back to most media of their 20 to 30 departmental students, who are defined as not self-contained, but 11 students per class with IEPs, with a teacher and perhaps a TA, but who attend gen ed instruction for some of their class subjects. So it was to provide them with additional support on accessing the distance learning, should they have to return to it at some point. And they plan to copy the model currently being used successfully in the transition program. Some paraprofessionals will be returning as part of the return to hybrid learning. At this point, five to six are anticipated. A parent inquired as to how to get children who were struggling with distance learning the extra help they may need. An example was given of a student for whom a parent is in the process of getting a diagnosis. Some parents feel these children really need more support than can be provided, as can be provided through in-person learning. Dr. Sullivan said she understands the frustration, but COVID safety still requires stable pods of 15 students or less per classroom. Support's provided through what, what is called RTI, used to be called RTI, and is now called MTSS, Multiple Tiered Systems of Support. For pre-IEP students, was explained as a tool used for these students who do not yet have IEP but may need additional help. MTSS can address both academic and behavioral needs. The backlog on IEP evaluations in meetings is getting smaller, according to Ms. Morrell, who advised that they've seen an increase in parent or guardian participation in meetings as a result of using the virtual format. A parent indicated they were struggling with children refusing to comply with what is expected of them during distance learning, such as time required to be spent on certain educational programs outside of the synchronous remote instruction time during the school day, aka homework. The parent asked if there are consequences for students who refuse to participate. Example, a distance learning truant officer. Dr. Sullivan advised that we do have some staff making home visits to investigate students who are not logging into distance learning, to enforce upon them the need to attend, as well as to feel out what issues may be preventing attendance, such as access to technology, access to the internet, for example. Ms. Morrell advised that some self-contained students whose families had chosen distance learning were exercising their option to try to return to in-person learning, which in itself is a struggle to accommodate due to staffing and limited class sizes, as Dr. McGee explained. The plan is to try to get these returning students more well-versed in assessing their technology going forward in case we or they return to distance learning in the future. Dr. McGee advised the district had offered some virtual trainings for families on how to access the technology, and that there were some trainings available online. Dr. Holt was also present. Put a link to these trainings in the chat, but they are available on the school department website. Mr. Borje asked if we are reaching out to parents to see if they need help. Mr. Notoriani advised that we help any family who seeks help, and that we also have community partners who are helping with tutorials to parents, although in-person tutorials have ended as a result of the surge. A parent asked if kids are, about kids were often left to their own devices during some distance learning without a parent or guardian present to support them. She wants to know how these children are being helped. Dr. McGee advises that teachers are now using a program called Go Guardian to reach out to students to see, that they see are struggling to stay engaged in instruction. The children also have the option to reach out to teachers during synchronous instruction, as well as via email or chat. Shortly, Go Guardian will offer an extension to parents and guardians so that they can see what their children are doing on the internet during the day, although they will not be able to see it in real time, to make sure that they're, they are spending their distance learning hours actually attending distance learning. This will be more in the form of the history as opposed to an in-present time viewing of their childhood instruction. Dr. McGee advised that he's elected to forego a systematic testing in the school district as a result of a number of reasons, including but not limited to the shifting of the burden for testing to the districts, as he's previously explained, as well as the not-so-great history of how the tests are being lost and confused with other tests. Dr. McGee also reviewed our, our district's response to contact tracing, and he reminded all that he lacks the authority to order someone quarantined. That authority lies only with the Department of Health. But if he learns of a positive test result, usually from a family or staff member, directly and not from the Department of Health, he has and has exercised the authority to close classrooms where there has been a known or risk of exposure. The next meeting of the CILLAC will be on Thursday, February 4th, 21 at 6:00 PM. A virtual link will be sent to all for whom we have an email address. If I do not have your email address and you'd like to be added, please email me at kapiski, K-A-P-I-S-K-I, at hotmail.com, or at my school committee address, lkapiskis@onesocketschools.com. Also, notify me at either of those addresses if you'd like to add an item to our agenda. Our meeting was adjourned at 7:18 PM.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Kapiskas. Anyone have any comments or questions for her regarding CILLAC? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the CILLAC update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa, Dr. McGee, please.
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa? Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll go into, thank you. Next, we'll go into conferences and discussions. Mr. Notoriani, your technology and facilities update, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it's the standard reports that you receive every month. Just breaking them out, if you were to look at the diagrams that I provided, we have close to 700 work orders that have materialized over the last 30 days, that are in various states. That can be directly attributed to the fact that we were closed for a period of time. And anytime we reopen, whether it's after a break, whether it's after summer or any type of school break, it results usually in a significant amount of uptick of work orders. In addition to that, I've enclosed a copy of the satisfaction report, which indicates the satisfaction of our customers, which is our faculty, staff, and students. What's reflected before you is any response that we've received back. If we didn't receive a response, that's removed out of the report. And what you're looking for on your report is anything that's in green, that's satisfactory, means they were happy. Anything in yellow indicates that there may have been a concern or they were dissatisfied. I did take the opportunity to look at the two yellows that presented, and it was disagreement over the answer provided. Specifically, we know there's a problem with Google Hangouts. We know the video, as I indicated to some of the community members. There's issue with video, and we indicated that in the work order. Unfortunately, I think there was a misunderstanding because the teacher was not happy that the video wasn't working. But that's out of the control of the technology staff in OneSocket. The second report that you have in front of you is the same report, but for the facilities department. In the facilities department, we've, we've received one work order over the last 30 days. But I'd like to make sure, as I've said in the past about the reporting, that's indicative of the fact that much of the work done by the facilities department is not always in the work order system and in a report. Rather, it could be a telephone call because there's a leak, or the electricity shut off, or there's no heat, or, or a combination of those things. So let's not know necessarily reflective of the work performed. Nonetheless, we did receive one work order, and there are about 66 in the system for them. On the back page, I'm sorry, on the back page, coincidentally, there is one satisfaction. That was the only response we received back over the last 30 days. And that's just because only one person decided they were happy. In addition to that, in addition to that, the technology department over the last several weeks has been pushing out staff technology, which is the new iPads and Chromebooks. We hope to conclude that process sometimes next week or the week after. We did learn through the visit to the vaccination pod that the technology department is going to need to provide support whenever we do set up our own pod in OneSocket. And we've already begun the process by gathering the necessary equipment and having it configured. So we're ready to go when they announce whenever the pod's going to occur. We've also shifted back to delivering Chromebooks to the schools. Community may recall, we were shipping them out, and now they're directly being brought to the school buildings now. The students are back in person in the hybrid model. And over the next several months, the technology department will shift to also providing support and assistance for the upcoming state, upcoming state assessments. In terms of state reporting, the student contact data has been uploaded to Ride, and that is significant because the state uses our contact data to send out assessment, assessment and surveys. And the ILP data is being uploaded. And there's nothing else to report out from facilities. They're working as hard as they possibly can to meet the needs of the district. Thanks.
I want, just one comment, Mr. Notoriani, on your work order snapshot for technology. Am I correct in reading this, that you've got approximately 600 orders that are open at this point? The, the items in purple, maybe I misread it, or they're just new?
That's the total number of work orders, and they're at various states. So the company that does our work order system has changed the reporting. It's not exactly the way our old reports are, and I'm looking to find if we can get the old reporting format. That's the culmination of all the work orders in the various states.
Okay. All right. Do you have an idea of how many are open at this point? Because I know you've been working very hard to get everything taken care of, especially when we came back.
I believe we have 200, as of this afternoon, we had 266 work orders that were open when I left around 4:30.
Okay. And you're normal, what do you figure, how long is that going to take to complete, do you think?
I-
I don't have any minds, but what do you-
I suspect we'll be caught up sometime next week.
Okay. All right. Very good.
And I just have one more question. I just wanted to know, did we figure out about returning Chromebooks that we have? Like, if parents have Chromebooks that were repaired, was there a date or a way to return them in? Should we be sending them back to school with our, with our kids since they're back in school and leave them with their teachers? Or how should we go about doing that?
Mrs. Costa, so we're going to send an email, an email blast out sometime in the near future, indicating if you have any old equipment, if you could send it in with your child. If your child is not in person and they're, they're distance learning, we're going to make a separate arrangement to come back and pick up the equipment. But at this point, we're in pretty good shape in terms of our supply of equipment.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have a date certain for that, Mr. Notoriani?
No, Mr. Chairman, we, we don't at this time. So our major focus is getting all the new equipment out to the teachers and also getting replacements to the students. And I'm going to worry about the broken stuff at the very end. Because our focus is to make sure we have working equipment in front of everyone as quickly as possible. And then we'll, we'll circle back for the broken stuff.
Sure. Any other comments or questions from Mr. Notoriani?
Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke?
Thank you, Al. I know you, you passed out the new Chromebooks and the iPads. Have you got any feedback from teachers saying that this has been very helpful in delivering their subject or some of their assignments? Is there any information that you've heard from them dealing with the new technology equipment you've given them?
So first, we, we, we're in the process. We haven't gotten into everyone yet. So I just want to make sure everyone's clear, because if they're on the call here tonight, I don't want them to think they got missed. We're still in the process of passing it out. The vast majority of it has been passed out. And I've received quite a few emails back from teachers that are very thankful to the, to the committee and Dr. McGee for being able to provide the equipment, because they, they have recognized that it's, it's very helpful to have the new equipment. Unfortunately, Google had problems this week, but that's not reflective of the new equipment that, that we've handed them. They've been, as far as I can tell, have been quite pleased. And I have several principals on the call or on the meeting tonight, which I'm sure they could attest to as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the technology facilities update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, please.
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, we will, will, we've got, next on our agenda is an update on administering, administering the WIDA Access Assessment for multilingual learners. And I'll turn that over to Ms. Agia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So WIDA Access is a federally mandated assessment. It is the English Language Proficiency Assessment that's administered yearly to all our multilingual learners in OneSocket in the state of Rhode Island. It typically starts in January and ends in February. This year, Ride has extended the window to March 12th due to COVID. WIDA Access measures- WIDA Access measures the social and academic English language proficiency of the multilingual learners in four domains: speaking, listening, reading, and writing. Each domain is assessed separately. So reading assessment takes up to 60 minutes. The listening takes up to 65 minutes. Speaking takes up to 50 minutes. And the writing assessment takes up to 90 minutes. That's for grades one through 12. The kindergarten assessment is given individually and takes up to 45 minutes to administer. And finally, the WIDA Alternate Access can take up to 80 minutes to administer. Since the assessment is administered in person, safety is the utmost priority for us. Every school's testing session will follow the district's reopening plan, safety and guidance protocols that have been put in place, and guidance from RIDE. There will be constant cleaning. Students will be sitting six weeks apart. No more than 15 students in each testing session. We're trying to keep that number even lower. And the students will not be sharing any materials. Students will need to bring in their charged, I want to emphasize, charged Chromebooks, since most of the assessment is taken online. The kindergarten and alternate access, alternate access is given to the students with significant intellectual disabilities, are administered one-on-one. Students and teachers who are in the one-on-one testing, they are able to wear, the teachers will have face masks, and the students will have face masks, and the teachers will have the opportunity to wear face shields, as well as using a plexiglass in between the teacher and the student. The multilingual learners in the hybrid model can begin testing next week, depending on the school's schedule. Multilingual learners in distance learning will start testing next week. So we have, next week, we have Villanova, Hamlet, and OneSockets High School, starting the week of January 26th. We have Pothier Citizens going. The week of February 2nd to 5th, we have Coleman and Harris going. And finally, we have Globe, Vernon, and Savoy, starting the week of the 9th through 12th. We're trying to make sure that all this testing, a majority of the testing happens prior to February vacation. Just because if students go into quarantine or teachers are in quarantine, they do need those 14 days before they can return back to school or symptom-free. So we want to make sure we have enough time in case that happens. If they start their test day next week, but then they end up having quarantine, we just want to make sure we have enough time available to be able to complete the testing. And I do just want to take a moment to thank all the administrators and teachers who are working hard to schedule these tests. It is not an easy task right now, especially since many of our students, it's about half of our multilingual learners are in distance learning and half are in a hybrid model. So this is not an easy task to bring all the students together to administer this test. Does anyone have any questions?
Any comments and questions from Ms. Agia? Who asked? Mr. Leclerc?
Chairman, yes. About how many students are we talking about?
We have about 700 multilingual learners in the district.
So all 700 of them have to be done by that March date? 700, I should say?
Yeah. Yeah.
Keep moving.
Yeah. We're going to hopefully get a good majority of our students tested.
Good, I'm glad. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yep.
Thank you so much, Ms. Agia. That was great.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the WIDA Access Assessment for multilingual learners update. And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borje. Vice Chair Burke?
I think we might have lost them. Yeah, I think we lost them.
Vice Chair Burke? We'll come back to him. Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Let's see if we can find Mr. Burke again. Mr. Burke?
Yeah, I'm on my phone now.
All right.
I've been knocked off.
We're voting for the report that Mrs. Agia just gave us. Do you agree?
Yes, I agree, yes.
Thank you. Next, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:04 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Costa. Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Thanks, everyone, for joining us tonight. It was a good meeting. We got a lot accomplished. So stay safe, be well, and have a great week.
Okay.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.